Call the school board meeting of St. Lucie County, the regular meeting of October 12, 2021, to order. And welcome to all of you that are here with us tonight. It's good to see faces in the crowd. If you would please stand with me for the pledge and then our kids at hope pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now our treasure hunter pledge. As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you, and you may be seated. And let me take this opportunity to remind each of you that while you're in the auditorium, masks are required. When if you are a speaker at some point, you can certainly lower your mask to speak so that we're more audible and can understand well. Okay, we move to our public hearing, which I call to order, which is the proposed adoption of job descriptions as rules. Are there any in the audience who wish to address this particular topic? Seeing none, Mr. Superintendent, we'll take your recommendation.
Recommend the board approve all job descriptions and rules as rules as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Do I hear a motion?
No. Second it.
Heard a motion and a second. Any conversation? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion carries five zero. And we now close the public hearing and move to our special orders of business. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll call on Ms. Lydia Martin to take over.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Member, Superintendent Gent. At this time, I'd like to invite Jessica Parish, CEO and President of the United Way of St. Lucie County, who will provide the board with an update.
I think I need a new headshot after seeing it on the big screen here. Good evening. As Lydia mentioned, I'm Jessica Parish, President and CEO for the United Way of St. Lucie County. I wanted to just give a brief update of our partnership with St. Lucie Public Schools over the last year, where we're going and what we have in store. Just as a brief overview, United Way of St. Lucie County was funded founded in 1962, so we're coming up on our 60th anniversary next year, by a group of local community organizers back in 1962, obviously, from the city of Fort Pierce. And they were looking to support local health and human service organizations. Our mission is to mobilize the caring power of our community, and then our vision is to be the catalyst to achieve a sustainable community within the areas of education, financial stability, and health. And locally, we add a different pillar called basic needs. Not a lot of United Ways include basic needs as a separate funding area. They kind of lump it up under financial stability. So last year, despite COVID, the United Way of St. Lucie County was able to distribute over $2 million to roughly 22 community partners here locally, all within St. Lucie County, to provide assistance to over 164,000 residents. And on your screen, you could see a breakout of the percentage of children served versus adults served. A large portion of the children served by our funded partners are the elementary-age kids, roughly aged five to 10, and then followed by the high school aged 15 to 18. And then on the adult side, you'll see a large portion of the unknown, and that is simply because a lot of our feeding sites are out in the community feeding sites for the homeless. They don't collect demographic data. Sometimes it deters individuals from coming to receive a hot meal and things like that. So we categorize them as an adult unknown. However, we do collect zip code data, which you'll see here. So roughly 40% of our services were provided within the city of Fort St. Lucie, and the remaining 60% over that last year was within the city limits of Fort Pierce. So one of our initiatives that we have in our United Way is a program called Tools for Schools St. Lucie. And what Tools for Schools St. Lucie is, it's a free teacher resource center for teachers at 25 schools within St. Lucie County to come and shop on a monthly basis for school supplies for their classroom. So this ranges from crayons, pencils, glue sticks, up to backpacks and copy paper. This program was actually started back in 1997 with Chris Adams. It was called the School Supplies for Students, where we gave bulk school supplies to schools on a one-time basis. That first year, we provided 625 students with supplies in paper bags generously donated by Publix, who ironically is in the audience today. In 2018, we transitioned to this teacher resource center model. And since we transitioned, we've assisted over 1,100 classrooms with roughly $215,000 worth of school supplies. This past year alone, we did 63,000 items valued at 106,000. That includes Lysol wipes and PPE and things like that that were provided to the teachers for their classroom use. One exciting initiative that we're spearheading right now is called a Community School Initiative. United Way of St. Lucie County Board of Directors decided to set aside funds to start this initiative, which would be a first of its kind within St. Lucie County. A community school is a place and a set of partnerships between the school and other community partners. So it's really bringing community resources onsite to a designated school, whether that's health, medical, therapeutic, clothing closet, a food pantry, you name it. Whatever that school student population is in need of, it's bringing all of those resources onsite. This gives you an example of a lot of the different resources that could be brought into a community school model. Doesn't necessarily mean this is what St. Lucie County students need, but this just gives you an idea. Nationwide, the community schools' models report improved reading and math scores for their students, increased student attention, more parent engagement, increased student participation, and increased teacher retention. So starting in July, we pulled together members of the district, some of these partners that you see on the screen, to start talking through this initiative. What does it look like? What school should we look at selecting as a pilot? And funny enough, three weeks ago, a grant opportunity popped up from the University of Central Florida to apply as a community partnership school. This grant would afford about up to $75,000 to plan a community school initiative within the community, which we had already started. So thankfully, through Lisa Slover, who works for the school district, she was able to craft this grant application on behalf of United Way as a nonprofit partner to submit to UCF. Some of these partners that are on the screen are those that we just pre-engaged to kind of get a feel for who's involved, who's interested, as well as Children's Services Council of St. Lucie, Sean Boyle, the CEO, is here as well. Between the two of us, we're pulling together all of our resources to bring this initiative to light. Through many meetings with the school district, we set on White City Elementary as the pilot for this community school initiative. Meeting with the principal, we got an idea of some of the needs and the desires of the students and things like that. And we're planning on going into the school and beginning this pilot January 3, after winter break. As a soft kickoff to this community schools' initiative, United Way of St. Lucie County has been the recipient of 10,000 books from the Marine Toys for Tots Foundation. So again, in partnership with Children's Services Council of St. Lucie County, the St. Lucie Reads movement, we're getting ready to distribute 10,000 books to the students in St. Lucie County schools. Since we selected White City Elementary as the pilot for the community school initiative, every student at White City Elementary will receive five books. This way, they can take them home and start an at-home library. As part of the St. Lucie Reads initiative, they've also selected Windmill Point Elementary, so all the students at Windmill Point will once again receive five books to take home. We will also be providing three books each to all the students at Sam Gaines Academy. In addition to those three schools, we will be providing three books to all of the VPK students within the Early Learning Coalition sites throughout the county as well. And that would distribute 10,000 books in the hopes of starting an at-home library to begin reading. So, you know, as we do our work, we can't do it without the support of local organizations in the community at large. So around October 15, we'll begin kicking off our St. Lucie Public Schools United Way campaign. Through this campaign, it's going to be a virtual. Employees can give either online through payroll deduction, or a one-time gift, or whatever sees fit for them. Deana Shatley, who is our Director of Development, is available for any engagement opportunities, virtually, in-person presentations. We can bring in agencies, anything such as that. But if each teacher and staff member of St. Lucie Public Schools was able to contribute just $1 per paycheck, St. Lucie Public Schools could generate over $120,000 in support for United Way and all these initiatives that I just mentioned. So more to come on the campaign presentations. That kicks off the end of this week and runs through November 15. That's it. She stole my thank you slide. Are there any questions? Is that still yours? Thank you.
Thank you so much. I thought I stole your quote.
All right, at this time, I would like to recognize Publix for their generous donation of $49,300 in $20 gift cards. We have two representatives from Publix, Arthur Jackson, who's the manager at the Publix in St. Lucie West, and Kathy Baratella, who is the manager at the PGA Verano Publix. If you would come forward, please. These gift cards will be proportionally distributed to the schools, and the schools have already been notified about this generous donation, so they're very excited to receive this. And if either one of you would like to say a few words?
So we came here as representatives of Publix to help out Tools for Schools with $49,300, just to show our commitment to be a part of the community. Thank you.
I'll also say, a lot of you guys in the room have probably helped us raise this money also, because whenever you come through our registers and we run our register campaigns and they ask you at the register to donate, it's all of our customers in our community that come together to do this with our with our associates. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And we do have a certificate of appreciation, and so we would like to give that to you. And do we have any board members that would like to come down for a photo? I'll have you come right up here. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, as the board members are making their way back, at this time, I'd like to invite Bill Tomlinson to come forward. Bill Tomlinson is the Executive Director of our Student Services Department, and he will share some information about disability history and awareness weeks.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Gent. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening. Just want to briefly state that Florida statute requires that the first two weeks in October be set aside as disability history and awareness weeks. This is for the sole purpose of instructing students about disabilities, about the rights, disability rights movement, and make them more aware of people with disabilities and their contributions to our society. Not all individuals with disabilities were always given an equal opportunity to education. But now, with the passage of the Education for All Handicapped Act in 1975, excuse me, and now with that being reauthorized into the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, all children have a right to a free, appropriate public education, no matter what the disability category. And one out of every five Americans will be identified as an individual with a disability. In Florida, more than 400,000 children are served in public schools as children with disabilities. In St. Lucie County, we currently serve over 6,000 children in our public schools. With an additional 200 or 200 children served that are parentally placed in private schools, we provide services for those children as well. And we service children in 13 different disability categories, from the mildest of speech impairments to the children that are most medically fragile in our schools. And we have over 600 individuals, from teachers, paraprofessionals, behavior techs, speech pathologists, occupational and physical therapists, nurses, school psychologists, social workers, all providing some level of service to children with disabilities in our schools. So I would ask that you please take a look at some of the great things that are happening with children with disabilities. Our current graduation rate is at 91.6%. It's one of the highest graduation rates in the state. Our post-school outcomes, thank you. Our post-school outcomes continue to exceed the state for those children with disabilities that are accessing post-secondary education and competitive employment. We have continuously been identified as having no significant disproportionality in discipline, identification, or representation in our categories, and we have received the highest designation from the federal and state government on IDEA and meets requirements for what we do. So if you would, please join us in the recognition of disability history and awareness in the first two weeks of October. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to skip ahead to our star awards. And the first group are a wonderful group of ladies, Katie Ocarti, Jamie Barber, Ava Difonzo, Chris Harrison, Annette Jackson, and Gina Jamie. This awesome team was nominated by Bridget Hargadine, who has been serving as our COVID lead. This team took on the task of manning a hotline to help St. Lucie County families figure out what to do if their child tested positive or had been exposed. They have helped families who were confused, got them the information they needed, so that they could return their children to school as soon as possible. They have helped to clarify communication between the school, parent, and the Department of Health, and did so by providing stellar customer service during this time. They are always positive, supportive, and always follow up with the correct information. So congratulations to this awesome group of individuals. And I do know we have one person in here. Jamie, if you want to come forward. You're representing the team.
We got Chris.
Chris as well. I will bring hers right up. She's hard at work today. Congratulations. Our next star recipient is Yvette Reed. She is an ESE Data Specialist, and she was nominated by Merina Jimenez, who is our District Receptionist. She states that Ms. Reed has been an amazing colleague to work with, and she's a great help to the ladies up front whenever they're trying to get ahold of somebody in the ESE department. She is able to assist parents that come in and make sure that she follows up with any information that they need. She truly practices customer service and always has a smile, always willing to help the parents and staff members. Her work ethic and her performance sets her apart from others. So congratulations to Yvette Reed, District ESE Specialist. And our final star recipient today is Sean Tosh, an economics teacher at St. Lucie West Centennial High School, and he was nominated by Assistant Principal Russell Adler. Russell states that besides being a great economic teacher, Mr. Tosh volunteers his lunch most days to help with lunch supervision. He is the resident tech guy, always giving up his mornings and afternoons to help teachers and staff with tech issues, and volunteers to supervise events like homecoming, prom, athletics, et cetera. He also helps with traffic in the mornings, rain or shine, and troubleshooting during testing, and he does this all with a smile. So congratulations to Sean. And at this time, we have a special presentation. Mr. Gent?
Thank you, Lydia. Is John Gillette in the house? John, come on up.
Yep.
How many years?
35.
Okay, 31. I was going to say 32. 32 years John has served in our school district. Right now, he's the head of our Facilities and Maintenance Department, and I wanted to personally give John this little token of our appreciation. It says, "John, it's clear." So let's see here. Thank you for 31 years of service, John Gillette. Now that you've climbed the mountain, enjoy the view. St. Lucie Public Schools, 2021. I want to thank you for your service. I also want to thank you, not only as an employee, but he's a friend. I know he's a friend to many on the school board as well over the years, where he's, if you've called him on the weekends and you need a power strip at the house, as long as you pay him, what's the going rate? I don't know, but he'll take care of you. But he's been great for this school district. He's been a great leader. We've seen so many positive things under his direction. We met a long time ago. He wrote me one of the kindest notes I've ever received a few months ago, and I've saved that. But we appreciate his hard work and what he's done and meant for us. So John, you want to, this is not a sermon. John's also a minister on the side, so you got a couple of seconds. Go ahead, buddy.
Fore-scorer in seven years? No, I'm just kidding. I really am. I just have a lot of great memories about my time here. I've been here half my life, and I can tell you now that I'm better leaving than I was coming in. And that's thanks to Mr. Gent and the board members for all their support, but also for the people in the room, the departments, the custodial department, all the people that work side by side with me on everyday activities. And my memories here are not about even my last building, this place, you know, making it as nice as I could, knowing that was going to be my last one, but the people, the intangible asset that this district has. I have some great people that are willing to do far and away and above anything asked of them. And I really want to tell you that I have appreciated the whole time and the honor that it's been to serve these people here for these many years. And I thank you all.
Board members, you want to come down? We'll take a picture with John.
And we have many members of the Gillette, Barber, family crew, and other supporters, if you'd like to come forward as well.
John, we did interviews today. We haven't named anybody yet, so you've still got 24 hours.
Okay, that concludes that portion of our meeting, and we will now move to our reports from our different councils. And ESAL report tonight? We welcome you to the podium.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, Board Members, Superintendent Gent. Thank you for the opportunity, and to the other ESAL executive board members, for the ability to introduce myself. My name is Jennifer Kincaid. I'm an occupational therapist in the Exceptional Student Education Department. I serve students pre-K through post-grad district-wide. Tonight, I'm here representing the executive board as the Vice President of the Pro-Tech Bargaining Unit. This is St. Lucie's newest bargaining unit in ESAL. It's made up of employees from professional, technical, thus the pro-tech, and specialized positions. The addition of this pro-tech unit to our bargaining units represents the first time that many of these employees have had the opportunity to be represented by a union. There are, and this was quite a shock to me, 50 different job descriptions within the pro-tech unit with 190 members in the bargaining unit. So as you can see, that's a very diverse group with very diverse needs. Some of these positions range from occupational and physical therapists and assistants, registered nurses, cafeteria managers, plant managers, and ITS professionals. Again, a very diverse group, some of whom have larger groups than others. So because it's such a diverse group, we have been working with the school board's contract negotiation team to develop the very first contract for the employees of the pro-tech unit. We have definitely had a shared interest to represent all employees, and I'm honored to be a part of that group. I have seen firsthand the collaboration between the school board representatives and the union representatives, all working for the best interest of all employees. So we were able to take some of the bones from the CTA and the CU contracts to develop this, but because of the unique needs and wanting to make sure we represent each job description and each employee within those descriptions, it's definitely taken a lot more collaboration than a typical contract might have. So it's my pleasure to work with that team, the contract negotiation team, also the compensation negotiation team, and it's my pleasure to represent my colleagues, and I look forward to working with all of you in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for a really informative report, and welcome to the meeting. Anyone from CWA to report this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll call our young friends from the St. Lucie Public School Youth Advisory Council, and welcome you to the podium tonight.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school members, and Superintendent Gent. Since the last school board meeting, we have finished identifying the students that will serve as the inaugural cohort of council members to the Youth Advisory Council. We will be working alongside Chairwoman Holly to conduct our first meeting. We'll be swearing in our council members, establishing council meeting norms, and developing a preliminary agenda of the concerns the council will address throughout the year. We intend to hold this meeting within the first two weeks of November. We also look forward to having our council members in attendance at the November school board meeting and filling the room with more students. In the coming weeks, alongside Chief Communications Officer Ms. Martin, we'll be creating a page on the St. Lucie Public Schools website dedicated to the Youth Advisory Council. On this page, we hope to highlight each council member's, each council member elaborate more on the council's mission and purpose, and have a resource where our meetings, minutes, and agendas will be posted. Additionally, we have recently obtained an email address for the council, which is yac@stlucieschools. Again, that's yac@stlucieschools. And this email will serve as one of the many tools the council will use to be responsive to the student body's interests. If students have any particular concerns that they would like the Youth Advisory Council to discuss, in our next meeting, we encourage them to email us. in our next meeting, we encourage them to email us directly. As always, thank you, and we look forward to the possibilities.
Thank you, Mr. Baca. We look forward to the possibilities as well. Before we move to the business portion of our meeting, let me just remind everyone that no more speaker requests will be accepted after this point. We'll move now to the consent agenda. Board members, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Don't move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Mills and Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries five-zero. Mr. Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
Recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Board members, before we honor that recommendation, are there any items that you wish to remove for separate discussion or vote? Seeing none, we have a recommendation from the superintendent. Do I hear a motion?
Move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Mr. Superintendent, we will now move to your reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. Just a few comments. Number one, this is Principal Appreciation Month, and I've had the opportunity in the last two days to visit twenty-three of our principals, and we give them a little, a goodie bag. There's some gift certificates in there. There's an excellent book and a little bit of a plaque that has a quote from one of the students about what they think of their principal. And so we're really going out and just showing what we, how much we appreciate our principals. They're the front line. They're the reason we're able to navigate all of the challenges that we have. And I want to also, we were able to go out, Dr. Mills was there, Jack Kelly, and Tom Jones and the Ed Foundation. We were able to go out and make surprise visits last Wednesday where we announced Felicia Nixon as our Principal of the Year. There's her picture pulled up right now. Felicia's over at Lawnwood, and Lawnwood was in DA status, District Accountability. And even in one of the toughest, the toughest academic year ever, they came off that list. And so she was well-deserving of that, and she really represents what's great about all of our principals. And then we went over to O'Kemick K. Eight, and Jackie Veltheis is our Assistant Principal of the Year, and she is a worker bee, is one of those ones you want to have. She does everything behind the scenes, and again, represents all of our assistant principals. So we will submit their names into the state pool, and we know we have two very, very strong candidates, and looking forward to see how far they can carry us. But again, well-deserving for both of those. Also wanted to announce that, and you're all familiar with Makita Brohm. Makita, who's over at, now she's over at C.A. Moore as Assistant Principal, won an award called, is the 2021 Class of the Association of Supervision and Curriculum Development Emerging Leaders, and she is one of twenty-four in the entire country who was named to this new class. And she was named as an exceptional candidate who brings diversity, ambition, with a nice balance of celebrations, reflections, and goals. So over the next two years, she will be with this association, working with them, networking with them, and gaining ideas that she can bring back as well as sharing ideas to this group. And then we have what's called High Impact Teachers, and these teachers are recognized based on the results of the most recent state assessments, and they're invited to participate in a year-long professional development called High Impact Teacher Corps. We have two from Lawnwood Elementary, Errolan Aaron and Charles Jacob, and one from C.A. Moore, Octavius McQueen. So I want to wish, we recognized them last week with our principals, but I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. You also received an invitation to the St. Lucy Chamber of Commerce, Best Places to Work. They will then be announcing again the winners of the Best Places to Work. And so I know a few of you have gone to that before, and we're confident we're gonna keep that streak going. This past Friday, we were able to present to our principals, To Live, To Lead, Presentations of the Leadership. We had probably the best speakers we've had, and so that will be made available to the board members. Denise, we'll give that to you, and you can watch it at your leisure. You know, they're about thirty minutes in length, and you'll have it, and you got the entire year. But it's important to us to sharpen our saw with our principals. It's one of the reasons our culture is as strong as it is, because of the leadership, and we don't take it for granted. So I will share that with you all, and Denise Rodriguez will get that information out to you. And then, I'll get this wrong, but it's Teacher Week, right? So teachers or employees, education employees can go to McDonald's for a free breakfast. Is that right, Lydia?
Yes.
All right, so if you work for the school district, you get a free breakfast. Just don't be late to work or late to school. But most deserving, and we thank McDonald's, and again, thank the presentations tonight from Publix. That was a great gift, and the gift cards that they've given to the students and staff members, and then to be able to work with the United Way and what they're doing in adopting White City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Harrell, a report?
No item except to express my great appreciation for the opportunity to represent and provide counsel to the board for a while, and it's been an honor and a privilege. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Harrell, we have tried to put into words how we feel, and I'm going to ask Ms. Harrison now if she would read a resolution into the minutes in your honor.
Mr. Harrell, since I am an old timer, and I can recall when you interviewed for your position on the board as honoring you for a job. Well done. Whereas Daniel B. Harrell served with honor and distinction as attorney to the School Board of St. Lucy County, Florida for over thirty-four years, from February nineteen eighty-seven through October two thousand twenty-one. And whereas Mr. Harrell brought to his position not only the immeasurable knowledge and insight that came from his personal attendance of the St. Lucy County Public Schools, he also brought an intellectual strength and continuing scholarship that had been nurtured in his early education and sharpened in his studies at the Georgia Institute of Technology, the University of Florida, and through certification as a specialist in education law, and the Florida Bar Board of Legal Specialization in Education, the highest level of evaluation offered by the Florida Bar. Whereas Mr. Harrell, a highly respected attorney, skillfully practiced administrative law, education law, government law, zoning, planning, and land use law throughout his esteemed career when serving as attorney to the Interstate Commerce Commission in Washington, D.C., the St. Lucy County Board of County Commissioners, the Martin County School Board, and the St. Lucy West Services District. And whereas Mr. Harrell further brought to bear for the School Board of St. Lucy County and his community, the balanced experience he gained through continuing in diverse areas of public service, including his membership on the St. Lucy County and American Bar Associations, the Florida Bar, the Florida School Board Attorneys Association, and the National School Boards Association Council of School Attorneys. And whereas Mr. Harrell has continually demonstrated in a self-effacing manner, a special perspective on familiarity with and appreciation of public education, with an immutable regard for the individual student, always striving to enhance the overall quality of the St. Lucy County School District. And whereas Mr. Harrell has been a diligent and vigilant advisor to the School Board of St. Lucy County through times of great challenge, including issues and matters that occasionally were unpopular and often were the cutting edge of education law, yet he undertook his professional responsibilities with humility, courtesy, and respect. And whereas Mr. Harrell worked patiently through the years to guide and counsel the School Board of St. Lucy County as it brought forth magnet schools, school resource officers, appointed superintendents, controlled choice, unitary status, new and amended policies, school facilities, technology, impact fees, and redistricting. And whereas Mr. Harrell has given generously of his time and expertise, extending graciousness, understanding, kindness, and a keen sense of humor to those fortunate enough to know and work with him. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of St. Lucy County, Florida, sitting in regular session, duly assembled, earnestly expresses sincere appreciation to Daniel B. Harrell, and he is hereby honored and personally recognized for his historically significant and esteemed service of thirty-four years. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be spread upon the minutes of this board formally to memorialize the indelible service of Daniel B. Harrell, and that the original resolution shall be presented to him, adopted by the School Board of St. Lucy County in the city of Port St. Lucie, Florida, on October twelve, two thousand twenty-one.
Mr. Harrell, this is truly one of those bittersweet moments. We are thrilled for you to be able to go and enjoy and travel and do things, especially that your wife is requesting of you, which we know you will enjoy. But it is, it's tough for us. You have been a mainstay for us and a steady, steady hand and rock, and we hope this resolution expresses to you just how much you have meant to this board, and your legacy will carry on. I was sharing at a meeting I was at last week with Florida School Board Associations and shared the news that you were retiring, and there was just a general expression of, wow, you know. We always looked forward to knowing that he was there and could offer advice and be a steady support, not only for this school board, but for the entire state of Florida, and we just appreciate everything you've given so much and wish you the best in your retirement. Board members, any others that wish to make a comment to Mr. Harrell?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Mills?
I just want to say to Attorney Harrell how much I've appreciated you over the years, not just here with the school district, but also in the community. Thank you for how you have even assisted my family, my daughter, as she came up the ranks as an attorney, and our daughters went to school together. So I've known Dan as well as John Gillette for many years. Could be almost forty years, how time flies. But I just want to let you know how much I appreciate you. Since two thousand and ten coming on this board, you have been someone that I could go to and receive advice as the years have gone by, and I just wanted to make sure that you knew how much I appreciated you.
Mr. Ingersoll?
Well, I would like to say I grew up with your daughter, too, but my brother was hung out, hung out weather more than I did. But Dan, you've been part of the family forever. Now, I've been here half the time, and I just remember my first three years on the board and the frustration of wanting to get government moving quicker, and you would just, would be that calming voice to me and says, well, you just have to let it go. And I appreciate that, and the words of wisdom, and the way that you were able to handle difficult situations between some board members and myself sometimes, and your voice was immeasurable, and I appreciate that. And you made a smooth transition for almost all of us in many difficult situations through impasses and difficulties with negotiations and contracts. You truly have been the hero that no one gets to see. You advise us in ways that help us make us the easiest and simple decisions, and we appreciate that. You've saved us millions and millions of dollars. Thank you.
Mr. Harrell, I've been telling you for the last, I can tell you, since I heard that you were leaving, you know, just thank you. I'm obviously one of the newest board members here, but I call you a lot. I rely on you a lot, and the many phone calls. And one of the words that I could use to describe you is, like Mr. Ingersoll said, was calm. You know, your presence beside me is soothing. It's calming. You know, it keeps me grounded. You know, so I'm going to miss that. And you make learning, or your explanation is like one-on-one. I can understand what you're saying. So I really do appreciate that. It makes learning for me that much easier. You know, there's, I, what I'm saying, Mr. Harrell, is that I'm gonna miss you. I'm definitely gonna miss you. But I wish you all the best, and just enjoy, enjoy, enjoy. You know, and I hope that even though we are not going to be working together, that we can still have conversations, and we'll check in from time to time. So thank you again, Mr. Harrell.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes. Dan, this isn't the first board that we've worked together on. Remember back, the St. Lucy County Bridge Authority, and Shaken, who said they talk about some discussions and some back and forth. You were in the middle of all of those many times, and I don't know how many years we had that for, before the money was moved by Ken Pruitt and the board was dissolved. But a lot of very eventful discussions, and always, just as you did here over the past year on this board, you always had the greatest demeanor. You have an old soul. Before your time, you just handled, you treated everyone the same. As Jennifer just said, you have that special attitude. And all I can say, you are the ultimate professional, and I'm gonna miss you. You will be missed, sir. And good luck in all your endeavors. You're a good man.
And also to Ms. Harrison for putting the resolution together. Thank you so much. Do it eloquently. Mr. Gent?
Yeah, I just want to join in. When I came back and I saw that Dan was still here, that was like a calming influence because I knew the reputation he had when I left, and he's recognized really as the leader across the state with the Attorneys Association. And one of the things that I always appreciated was whenever I gave him a call, you know, whatever Dan told you, you could take it to the bank, and you could write it down where you write things down, because it was gonna be the truth, and you could have that confidence to go forward with whatever the issue was. And so I wish him the best, and out there hunting and whatever else he does. But, you know, to be able to go to folks and just know that whatever they tell you, you've got that confidence and that trust, that just, you know, that's the culture that we're built on, and Dan was, we could put Dan's picture up and put that right underneath of it, and put it in the dictionary, and that's what it would stand for. So I just want to say thank you and congratulations.
We'll now move to our school board member reports, and Dr. Mills, we'll begin with you this evening.
Good evening to everyone. I want to congratulate our Star Award recipients. Each and every one of you in your several different places, it's because of you we can be who we are today. So thank you so much for your labor and your work. Also to Publix as well, and to United Way for the strong support that both of these agencies and businesses have been to St. Lucy County schools. They have raised literally thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars to give toward student education and student safety and care. So thank you very much for your help in the educational system.
the Principal of the Year for St. Lucie County, and congratulations Lawnwood Elementary School as well. And also Assistant Principal Jacqueline, thank you from Oakhamic. We are congratulating you as well for your labor and for becoming the Assistant Principal of the Year, and I will pass it on to the next person, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Mr. Ingersoll?
I really don't have a report. I just want to thank Jack Kelly for standing in for my Concerned Citizens Meeting, and appreciate you going and taking my spot, Jack. Thank you.
Free lunch.
Free lunch, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Ms. Richardson?
Thank you. So I just wanted to say welcome back, Mrs. Hawley. You were missed, and, and we're happy to have you back. And I don't know Mr. Gillette, I, but I can say to Mr. Gillette that everything I've heard about him has been nothing but good, and I'm going to say to Dr. Mills that you must have been reading my mind, because you said everything I was going to say, so I'm just going to say ditto to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Mr. Kelly?
Yes. Unfortunately, as many of you know, everyone knows, we had an unfortunate, unfortunate accident, whatever you want to call it, this week, and we lost a beautiful little girl at a bus stop this week, and I want to thank, I think we had just about everybody on the, we were at the funeral and different things, we had representation everywhere. She was a wonderful little girl, and it's so unfortunate, what a tragedy, like we couldn't have anything more tragic. There was a vigil, which I attended, we all tried to go to the different funerals and things. At that vigil in Fort Pierce, I just want to thank Helen Wild that she said, I think these young ladies work for you, Mrs. Tapia and, and Ms. Alanis, I think, or the two names. What a wonderful job they did with the parents and helped setting that up. It's not an easy thing to show your sympathy and be there when you have a tragedy like that. I think we had a couple of hundred balloons, and it was all in the park, and people were just wonderful, they came from everywhere, and our hearts go out, I just can't even imagine something like that. I'm a parent, we all are, it was a terrible, terrible tragedy, but I want to thank them for what they did. We also had a young lady, and I don't know her name, from the Sheriff's Department, I guess she is the victim's advocate, also there, they bought the PA system and the tent and all the shares, and people bought all kinds of supplies, but what a tragedy, and our hearts go out, and hope it never happens again, anything like it, and I, we are looking at the best way we can, things we can do with the bus stops, I'm sure we did discuss that, so that's, that's something that's on the table, sir, so, again, I, also, one last thing is, I want to thank, you know, the teachers, we've had a rough year and a half, to say the least, and every, everyone from the top down has, has really been on the front lines, but one group of people that, that doesn't get much attention are the people, when you walk into the school, there are people at that front desk, they're, what do we call them, administrators, clerics, whatever, they buzz you in the front door, they answer the phone, and they are on the front lines, I'm not even going to get into it, but I want to thank them all for everything they're doing during this time. They've been answering the phones, putting up with questions, adverse things, and you are recognized, we understand what you're going through, and they, they're wonderful people, and just everyone has been so wonderful. And I want to guarantee you, there is a little teeny light at the end of that tunnel, it's coming, there's a teeny light, we got to make it bigger, and I will say this again, as I said at the last meeting, and I will keep saying, these masks are great, they protect your child seven, eight hours a day at school, but a vaccination will, will protect your child and you 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So just, you don't have to get it, but it works, hundreds of millions of people have gotten the vaccination, so just think about it, get vaccinated. And with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. A couple of just FYIs for my fellow board members. Number one, each of you should have received an email today from the Florida School Board Association talking about the ethics class. It won't be offered at our normal convention time, but each of us is required to take that ethics class by December 31st, so you can do it online. It's there, the link is there and easy to do, so please don't forget to do that before the year ends. And prior to the meeting, I sent probably five or six different resumes and informational pieces on attorneys that have expressed interest in becoming our school board attorney. So if you would look those over in the next few days and anticipate a meeting one day next week, where we will have them come in for actual interviews, if you have anything you'd like to add or share with any of those, please just let me know, and I can add it to, to our list, but we will be pursuing that next week. I honestly was hoping Mr. Harrell would give us a last minute reprieve and say it was all a joke, but since he didn't, we're going to move ahead with our interviews next week, but, and I may have two more to send to you as well, I'll do that electronically if they come in. I have no other business to bring before us this evening, so we will close our normal school board meeting and move, we do have several unscheduled speakers.